City Attorney Dixon, is there any reportable action from the closed session?
Mayor, if you know I know there is not.
Okay, thank you. Y'all ready? Good evening, I would like to call our regular city council meeting back to order at 7:00 PM. At this time, I would like to ask Chaplain Serena Cummins from the Orange County Sheriff's Department to come forward for the invocation, and then we will have Boy Scout Troop 772 come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you please join me in prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, we are privileged to come before you freely in prayer to worship you individually as we choose. May we never forget what an honor that is. I personally thank you for the commitment of each city council member here this evening. May efficiency, cooperation, wisdom, and respect prevail as the items of the agenda are discussed. I pray specifically for the city's law enforcement officers and ask that you watch over and protect them as they continue to serve and protect the city of Laguna Niguel. I also thank you for the members of the public that are here tonight to support this meeting. We welcome your presence and your peace here with us now. It's in your name we pray, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Boy Scout Troop 772, color guard advance. Please place your right hand over your heart. Those in uniform and veteran salute, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Audience, you may be seated.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your being here tonight on the first day of school and starting our city council meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, and do we have the troop leaders here? Hey, if you'd like to tell us your name, your grade, and what school you go to.
I'm Daniel, I go to Aliso Viejo Middle School and I'm in 7th grade.
I'm Alan Als, I go to Aliso Viejo Middle School and I'm in 8th grade.
I'm Nicholas, I'm in 7th grade and I go to Community Roots Academy.
I'm Issa and I go to Aliso Niguel High School and I'm in 9th grade.
I'm Ben and I go to Niguel Hills and I'm in 7th grade.
I'm Jacob, I'm in 7th grade and I go to Community Roots.
Great job, thank you so much. And I know we have parent paparazzi here, so we'll pause a moment for pictures. Okay, our first presentation this evening is to commend Brayden Hepburn on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. At this time, could Brayden please come forward for the presentation? So Brayden, why don't you tell us about your Eagle project?
So, there's a group called the California Living History Mission, and they go around to elementary schools to teach 4th graders about California's history. So, I helped make a, or I made a gold panning station for them to bring there to help learn for kids.
Fantastic. So, the Laguna Niguel City Council commends you on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is the highest rank a Boy Scout can achieve, and whereas only 4% of the boys entering scouting attain this rank, and whereas to attain the rank of Eagle Scout, a scout is required to obtain a minimum of 21 merit badges, devote several hours of service to the community, and complete an Eagle Scout project all before one's 18th birthday, and Brayden just told us about that project. Now therefore be it resolved that the Laguna Niguel City Council wishes to congratulate Brayden Hepburn on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and commend him for his dedication and commitment to superior performance. Congratulations. How many merit badges have you earned? Wow, that is quite a lot. And we also have something else to present you. This is the city pin with the city seal on it, but there's something extra special added for Eagle Scouts and Gold Award Scouts, and that's the Excellence in Scouting tag on there. So, wear this with pride, your city is proud of you, but you also now have a responsibility to younger scouts to bring them forward and to continue being a responsible citizen in our community. So, congratulations, we thank you. Are your Eagle Scout advisors here? No, not tonight. Okay, all right, so parents, parents I think want to take pictures? Congratulations, Laguna Niguel has another Eagle Scout, thank you so much. Okay, and our next presentation is a proclamation declaring September 17th to the 23rd as Constitution Week. Who's a good holder? You gonna be a good holder this time? Okay, here's the proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas this marks September 17th, 2018, as the 231st anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document, its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th to 23rd as Constitution Week, now therefore I, Mayor Elaine Janaway, on behalf of the Laguna Niguel City Council, do hereby declare the week of September 23rd, 2018, as Constitution Week and urge our citizens to reflect on the privileges and responsibilities of American citizenship. So, that'll be coming up, so we all know how important the Constitution is to our government and our way of life, so that's something that we should all be recognizing. Okay, we will send that to them, and that concludes our presentations for this evening. Okay, well, we have a new member of our city team up here. We have our new Director of Public Works, Jackie Scott, so welcome to Laguna Niguel, welcome from the entire city council, and if our city manager Christine Ridge would like to introduce Jackie to Laguna Niguel, please do so.
Thank you, Mary, it's my pleasure to introduce Jackie to Laguna Niguel. She started on Friday, so this is her third day. She brings a wealth of information with her. She is both a civil engineer and a traffic engineer. She most recently was the Transportation and Traffic Engineer for the city of Orange. She does have a degree in civil engineering from Oregon State. She also has an MBA from California State University Long Beach, and she's known for her technical abilities, straightforward management approach, and solid record of achievement of completing projects on time and within budget. So, we're happy to have her as we start one of our largest construction projects right now in Crown Valley Park. I also would like to point out, Mary, that we have another face at the table, not a new face to Laguna Niguel, but DC Contreras is joining us from OCFA, and he is new in his assignment as our DC for our city, and so we should welcome him as well.
Welcome, we welcome both of you, we're glad you're here, thank you. Okay, and we really liked that part of "on time and budget," okay. Okay, any person wishing to address the city council will need to complete and present a gold-colored request-to-speak form to the city clerk. These forms are available on the counter that is located near the door to council chambers. Please be aware that there's a time limit of three minutes for each person to speak. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read your written statement. City Clerk Gomez, I have one request-to-speak form, are there any additional ones?
No, Mary, there are no others.
Okay, we have Juan Gonzalez. Juan, if you could please state your name and address and speak directly into the microphone, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, how are you everybody? Juan Gonzalez, SoCal Gas, we're at One Liberty in the city of Aliso Viejo. I wanted to take the time to be before you this evening and make the formal introduction as I recently became the new local public affairs manager for SoCal Gas in your region. I've been very fortunate, I've been here since approximately mid-February, March. I already had the fortune to work very closely with the city at your last event here at the community rooms, we were kindly invited and we appreciate that, Madam Mayor. Again, just wanted to take the opportunity for me to introduce myself to the council, looking forward to meeting with the city manager as well as the new public works director. I can share with you, we've been also very working closely with Mr. Ziadmas Budi and his staff, the staff for public works activities here at the city, and it's just been magnificent, so I really appreciate the opportunity. I'll share just a brief information about my background, I've been working with SoCal Gas for approximately four years now. Local from Orange County, born in the city of Orange, raised my entire life in the city of Anaheim, and all I know is Orange County, and I wouldn't change it for anything else. Again, very happy to be part of this area, and again, looking forward to working with all of you. So, Mr. Minigard, pleasure seeing you again. Lastly, if I may, before I step away, I again wanted to share with council and all the folks, your residents, our customers, in regards to one of the promotions we have going on, concurrently, we've been having a lot of issues with third-party entities hitting our pipeline, so we're promoting the dig alert, call 811, call before you dig. Anytime you're doing any expansion at the home or even gardening in the backyard, please call 811, call before you dig to avoid hitting any electrical or pipeline in the area. With that, madam, and members of council, thank you so much, and I look forward to working with all of you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for introducing yourself, though we have met you before and have seen you, we appreciate your participating around town, and our residents greatly appreciated it when you were at the community fair, they got lots of good information, so thank you. We look forward to seeing, continue seeing you. Okay, public communications is now closed. We will now move to our consent calendar, items 1 through 10. Are there any items that need to be pulled for comment or discussion?
I had one, Madam Mayor. I need to, on consent item number one, I have to abstain to category number 3063, which is on page 15 of 18. Those checks relate to a project which I've otherwise recused myself from in the past because it's on a street that abuts my property, so in abundance of caution and for consistency's sake, I think it's the best interest to do that, so I'll just be abstaining to that portion of number one.
Okay.
And for the same reason, number nine on our consent calendar relates to that agenda item and some additional funding for that project, and I will have to abstain from that one as well. I will ask to pull number eight, please.
On the item number one, due to any perceived potential conflict of interest, I wanted to recuse myself from just item number one.
On the entire warrant register? Or the first item on the warrant register?
It's the item, varied item number 1664, and that's the only one.
Okay, so, alrighty. So, Mayor Protem is abstaining from one of the items that he noticed on the warrant register, and then Councilmember Minigard is abstaining from item 1664, Mayor Protem is abstaining from consent calendar item number nine. Councilmember Lindholm?
I was on vacation, I'm abstaining from the minutes, item number three, and I'd like to pull item number four.
I'm not abstaining from anything, but I am pulling item seven, please.
And I'd like to make a motion for approval of the balance.
We've had a lot of, let's see, so you're pulling seven. Okay, so Councilmember Lindholm is abstaining for number three and pulling number four. Councilmember Davies is pulling number seven, and I'm pulling number eight. So, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent?
Move the remainder.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Lindholm, seconded by Mayor Protem Davies, I mean, excuse me, Jennings, which side are you, on the right or the left? Okay, to approve the remainder of the consent calendar, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. Got all that? Okay, great. Okay, so for the polled items, item number four, city manager Ridge, did you have any information on that, or?
Certainly, I would ask Councilmember Lindholm if she wanted a presentation or if she just had some questions.
No, I have a comment on that, I've already talked to the city manager on this particular issue. Item number four is approval of agreement with a retail coach, which is absolutely a fabulous idea, that we will improve the economy within the city and support the businesses within our city. What I'd like to add to this particular item is kind of a standard of success. We do hire them, but I'd like to see as track and report success have a comment back in six months on what their status is and what they're achieving, and an annual report in 12 months to reevaluate it and see what their success story is, so that we're putting a standard of success built into not just that they're going to be out there, but what businesses are they going to bring in. So, I would like to include that in the contract, and that would be included in my motion.
So, you would like to include a six-month and a 12-month report?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may clarify, so not in their contract, but asking staff to make sure that we do perform those two tasks at six and 12 months.
Okay, I would just add that to the motion to approve this item.
So, the, what you're adding is that staff provides that information back to the council at the six and 12-month marks. Okay, any further discussion on item number four? Okay, is there a move to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mayor Protem Jennings, seconded by Councilmember Davies. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. Okay, item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. This is in regards to the proposals that were sought for labor compliance, monitoring services performed, labor compliance monitoring for our Crown Valley Park Tier 3, and I guess I could put this towards Director Masabuti.
Well, or City Manager Ridge.
Okay, thank you very much, City Manager. I guess I'm wondering why, and I mean, it's 45,000 when we look at the price of what we're paying for this park, but I don't understand why CW Drive doesn't handle this, and this should be part of their, you know, part of their package, why we have to go out and actually pay for this when I look at what we're putting towards them.
Councilmember Davies, you ask a very good question, there's a long history to it. So, based on California state law, we always were required to have our contractors monitor to ensure that they were meeting all of the labor standards and the prevailing wage and all of that. So, we had a company on board that did that for the city's projects. They went out of business, and we had subsequently contracted with CW Driver. It isn't a service that we procured with them, and it's not one that they actually offer, but to add a little more complexity, effective on January 1st, 2018, there was AB, I think it's 1701, that actually extended the provision of this compliance requirement to all construction contracts, where previously it was only based on contracts that had certain types of funding. So, it is a requirement that we have to have this in place, CW Driver doesn't offer the service, and so this is contracting with a company so we can make sure that we're in full compliance with the law.
Understandable, so perhaps if it's not this, any upcoming construction that we have, can we negotiate and have something like that put in there so we don't have to pay for someone outside to come in? Or we can pay for someone, but they would cover the costs.
We certainly could, if we, if there is a... We certainly could. If we, if there is a construction manager that will offer this service, we certainly could build it into that agreement.
Okay, thank you. I'm good with that. I would make a motion move unless someone else has a comment or questions.
Any other discussion on item number seven? Okay, so it's been moved by Councilmember Davies. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, carries. Okay, item number eight. So...
That was me. And you.
Yeah, that was both of us. You may, please go ahead.
Start.
You may start.
Thank you very much. Item number eight has to do with a number of amendments to a professional services agreement with respect to the design of playgrounds and other equipment around town. I want to limit my comments here. I have no issue with the item with respect to the playgrounds. I understand that. It's my intention to either move or to vote favorably on that at this time. But there's the second part with respect to the fitness component of it. We were being asked to add additional design components on something that we've already spent $54,000 on, the initial designs. Those haven't been, I haven't seen them, and I know that the rest of the council has, and I think it's in the subcommittee level at the Parks and Rec thus far. But we're also being asked now, in addition to that, to approve another $58,000 on top of the $54,000 that we already have, to do additional designs on that. And that's on a project that frankly, I'm not certain that we need. And I'm of the opinion that before I go spend all of that money, I'd like to take a look at what we have here, maybe have some discussion amongst the council about where it is, what it is, if it's necessary and all of that, because we also have, in addition to these design costs, we have $250,000 worth of dollars built into our CIP budget for this very project. And I'm a little bit concerned that that may be getting out of hand. If we're spending over or close to $400,000 on something that's just a fitness park, we haven't had anybody come in and, you know, ask us for that yet. I haven't heard buzz around the community that it's needed. It may be perfectly fine. I haven't seen it, and before I do that, I think it's necessary that we look at it. My recommendation will be that we table that portion of that, have it brought back. Staff can present that to us in whatever way they think is best, but I'd like to take a look at it, and we can have some preliminary comments before we go back. And I think the direction then, at some point, would either be if we liked it or wanted to change it, just do it with recommendations back to the Parks and Rec, and they can sort through whatever it needs it to be. So, those are my initial comments, and I'd appreciate whatever other comments you might have on it.
Okay, well, we have been putting money aside for the fitness park, so this is not an additional expenditure. This is going, using some of the funds that we have set aside for it. And when we look at the demographics of our city, and in fact, we were at a, we were both at the same workshop today, where we see the, our city, as other cities in Orange County, are aging. Our demographics, our population is aging. In fact, if you look at the trend, what's anticipated for the next five years, our schoolchildren, that's going to go down by 5%, but our 55 to 69-year-old age band, they're going to, that percentage is going to increase by about 33%, that group. And then the 70-plus age will increase by about 45%. So, we do have a growing senior population. The fitness park is for adults of all ages, and we have been putting money aside for it. Now, my concern with this is that we're looking at, I think we need to look at all of our parks in total, because what we're looking at is increasing our investment in assets for declining base, for declining demographic. So, while I understand how we need the increased footprint because of the new safety regulations, do we want to do that every time a park comes up? Or do we need to take a look at, do we need to keep this same inventory of parks? Or maybe we spread out the rotate, because we do three parks a year. Maybe we need to do two. Maybe we need to do one park with the bigger footprint, and then maybe another park, keep the same footprint that it has. Now, I, parks are valuable. They're valuable for our children, and we don't want to take that away from them, but when we know that that demographic is changing and declining, do we still need that same inventory? So, while I would vote to approve this item, I think that's, we need to do some further planning and assessment of our park inventory, because we can't keep throwing money at it and say when this, you know, because we need to make the park larger, the playground area larger, and it's going to increase the cost. We see here it's increased the design cost. Well, that means it's also going to increase the cost of the equipment, and it's going to increase the cost of the installation. So, that's something that we need to take a look at as a policy decision. Do we, do we keep increasing every time we have a park come up now? Do we increase that footprint because of these new requirements? Or do we take a look at what our entire inventory is? And as far as the additions to the fitness park, these are ones because that we're going to be coming online. These are new, um, design, what's the proper wording I'm looking for? These are new plans that come with the change in location. So, and that's something, again, this is something that we have been setting aside money for. But all that, City Manager Ridge, answer any specific questions on that.
You are correct. For all of this design work, we have sufficient funds in the capital improvement projects for that purpose, and we certainly can take a look at, reevaluate how we do our programming in our parks. But I do want to clarify, while the footprint is expanding on two of the playgrounds and three of the parks, there's not additional equipment. It's just the spacing that's needed to really replicate what was already there.
Okay. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I agree with a lot of the comments from both our mayor and our Mayor Protem, but I tend to agree with our Mayor Protem on this one. In terms of Chaparosa Park is a heavily used park. It has a high density. It's, parking is very difficult. I'm not sure this is the exact location, even if we do want it, and I'm not really in support of $58,000 to just kind of draw up plans. I'd like to see it as, and I do appreciate your comments, but I would like to see it go back and see if this is really what we want, where we want, because this is not even the equipment. This is just $58,000 to kind of think about it and maybe draw up some things. So, I would be, I think it's a reasonable suggestion to have it go back, and I'm very much in supportive of the other items on this agenda for the Marina Hills Park and also the other things that we have on there besides the fitness. I think that should be reexamined on where it is and how much it's going to cost. I mean, the budget is popping up on this, and I don't, I never like it when a budget is popping up. So, I'm actually supporting that. But I do appreciate your comments. I think your demographic comments are well-intended, and also we do have the Sea Country Center, and we have a new facility that's going to be built, so anyway, my comments on that one.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to concur with our Mayor Protem as well, in regards to completely agreeing those three parks, moving that forward, but I do have a concern as well. I know one of the reasons why we're going back and having to get another design is, I believe, you know, ADA changes, things like that. But we never got to see what the first design looked like, if it's something that we had envisioned, not to mention, they went ahead into design and took equipment out, it sounds like to me, that the, that the recs wanted. Is that correct?
Just in the conceptual design, not physically.
Right. No, but they still have to go back now, because to me, there seemed to be a lack of communication, and before you go to design, like we did with the park, we sat down and said, this is important to us. This is what we want to keep. This isn't, you know, this is what can go. I don't think that obviously was there, so we have to, you know, redo that. So, to me, I would like to be able to see what the original plan was, the design, and actually take a look at it going, all right, is this, you know, is this something that we've even envisioned to begin with, and is it worth us? You know, great, it looks great, then let's move forward, or you know what, maybe we need to make some changes? Or what you had said, Chaparosa Park is very heavily used, especially when it comes to baseball, and there's not a lot of parking there. So, that's something that we want to be careful about, you know, careful about, you know, making sure that we don't have, you know, not enough parking, and, you know, we know how the city is with parking, so we have to make sure when we're going to bring something in that there's adequate parking for everyone to use. So, I would actually second what Mayor Protem said in regards to approving the parks, but tabling, whether, tabling the increase for the design.
And if I may, Councilmember Davies, what we could do is, is my understanding with the initial design for the fitness, it was the actual fitness course itself and the equipment, so the additional work was the new location. So, perhaps we could schedule a workshop at the city council, and we can go over what designs were drawn to date for that.
And I think that'd be great, or we could do it outside, where we just either have two of us at a time, you know, and so we can do this beforehand and not taking that time up on the dais. Thank you.
I'm very pleased that Mayor Protem brought it up. For $58,280, when I have not seen the schematic or any kind of exhibits, to see what they're going to be doing for the fitness center for Chaparosa Park, it would be premature at this juncture to make a determination on that, so.
Okay, any more comments?
Just one last comment. I, and this is sort of a general budgeting comment, even though we have the money in the CIP budget, this is still another $58,000 that was not originally conceived, because the question, whether or not we're going to move it. It was one thing to have the fitness park where it was, at the design cost where it was, but moving it, if that's going to create another approximately $60,000 expenditure, I just want to make sure that we're on a right path here, because the list of mitigation issues that this, they're going to have to design around is fairly lengthy, and it's something that before they get into all that, I don't want to be $100,000 in this and make a decision that we decide to either go some other way or do something else, and I think it's just a good time to pause. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve item number eight, as written, with the exception of the design changes for the fitness park on Chaparosa Park, and...
Number eight or A?
I'm sorry, it's number eight.
I'll second that motion.
And the rest of the motion was to table what the design part for the fitness on Chaparosa Park. Thank you.
Okay, I'm trying to...
Item number eight on the agenda. Tab number eight.
Yeah, no, it's tab number eight.
I think he was just referring to agenda item number eight, changing that, not eight on the recommendation.
Oh, okay, so, can you please restate that? I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm looking at A, and you're saying eight, so...
Yeah, no, it's, the motion is to approve the agenda item as written, with the exception of removing that portion of it that relates to design of the Chaparosa Fitness Park, and to table that portion to a future date.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Lindholm. She said it was split-second faster. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stained, carries. Okay, that takes care of the consent calendar. We will move on to other business and council reports. So, there was a Crown Valley Park Tier Three ad hoc committee meeting. Councilmember Davies, would you like to report?
Certainly, thank you. This was really more so on the pool, which we've added to Tier Three and the community building, looking at the back area that has to be now ADA compliance with the diving boards, and also making sure that, we did have a shed back there, building over there, that making sure that it's going to be consistent in regards to the way everything else looks. So, it was a good meeting. We're really wrapping it up. We're almost done. I'm excited for this project. Obviously, we've broken ground and we're moving forward, so we all know that it actually does move pretty fast once it gets going, but it's exciting. I think these were good improvements that we discussed with the mayor, and I was grateful to have our city deputy city manager, as well as our city manager, there as well.
Thank you. Okay, now we go on to council reports. Who would like to start? Councilmember Lindholm.
Yes, just briefly, a couple items, and I'm not going to say what I attended. Actually, I was on vacation. But I'd like, if we could, on the Crown Valley, the new community building, to hear that we're hardening, to protect people as they go to the park. As you travel in many places, you get ballards there to protect citizens there. So, I'm hoping, and I haven't heard an updated report on improving the entrance to the new community building. And part of that should include safety ballards and that, so people cannot drive their cars there by accident or that kind of thing, and then just also have it as an activity area. And number two, the other comment would be, and that would be for public works, and I'll direct it to Christine Ridge, our city manager, on that. Whenever we have work done, as on the storm drains and that, I see asphalt repairs, and the asphalt repairs are, the ones I'm seeing are substandard. It's like when you, when you do a project, and then they come back and they patch it, it almost destroys where the road is. So, before we pay the last contingency fee, I would like to see us have somebody do an inspection of the patchwork done before that retained amount gets, goes back to, especially on Highlands, I'm looking at the patches, and you almost have to drive around all the patchwork done by a different company. So, can you, can you please, before we give retainer fees, inspect the patchworks that they do on the asphalt, because we do spend a lot of money, what, about a million dollars a year at least on our asphalt and resurfacing, so our roads are in great shape. That's all my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Davies?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, the mayor and I have been working with Police Services on an anti-bullying workshop. It's going to be September 6th, at 6:30 here in the community room. You can contact Police Services, and do we have that on the website as well for registration, the anti-bullying class? Not so much the registration, but the flyer, so they know who they can contact if they go to the website.
Uh, we can get that up tomorrow.
Perfect. I know we've got a great RSVP. The school system is putting out flowers as well. This is going to be the same program that we use, Get Safe, for the girls empowerment. So, it's for middle school students. It's co-ed, six to eight, eighth graders, 6:30 until 8 o'clock against September 6th. Highly recommend. This is a great class to get your children into, and if you have any questions, you can always call Police Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Minigar?
Well, I'm very pleased to announce that last Thursday, when I chaired the joint boards meeting of the Transportation Corridor Agencies, we got a report from the Wall Street, which is standard and poor global ratings, has upgraded TCA's San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor Agency from a senior lean bonds from B, triple B plus, to A minus. And this is a great news, because the Transportation Corridor Agency, back in 2004, secured $2.2 billion for the, for the corridor agency, and kudos go to the past board of directors, including my colleague, Councilwoman Linda Lindholm, that did a great job, and they paved the way for us that we can enjoy this rating. And according to the Wall Street, this is a huge accomplishment, because then the Transportation Corridor Agency would be in a much better financial position. And two quick stats for you. One of them is the toll revenue for the San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor Agency during the fiscal year 2018 was $164 million, and we had $32 million transactions. And with regard to traffic that you may be interested, the peak days on the toll road happens to be Thursdays and Fridays, that we typically get about 108,000 vehicles traversing the toll road. So, the monthly total is about 2.76 million people using it. So, with that, I stop there. I'm not going to talk about SCAG and all other organizations.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Great, thank you very much, Mayor. Only two things, one of which I attended with the mayor and the city manager today, and another one I'm attending in the morning. Both of them relate to the Orange County Business Council, and today was regarding retail rollout. We've been, as part of the economic development committee here in town, we've been looking at the leakage reports on sales tax and economic development and future casting and all of that. The OCBC came out with a fascinating... The OCBC came out with a fascinating report that's been years in the making to analyze who we are as a, as a region and where our retail trends are going. And the data that we saw, the initial data was very, very revealing. I love this data. I tied this in with the, the one that Settleback College does as well. And it's fascinating. It really is helpful when we're trying to future cast what's going to be necessary in town and that was good. Tomorrow's is the economic development for OCBC. They have their own economic development committee and I've decided to participate in that, just to bring that back to the council as well. So look forward to reporting that. So that's it. And, oh, before I leave, I wanted to welcome Jackie Scott. So thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on Monday, the Military Support Committee had our monthly meeting. Both Mayor, excuse me, Councilmember Davies and I are co-chairs of that. They had a car wash last Saturday, so thank you very much to the generous Laguna Niguel residents who supported that. All the funds raised go to support our one-four Marine unit and their families. And our Military Support Committee is getting ready for their annual fundraiser, a tribute to our military. And we're going to have some inspiring talks from the commanding officers of our adopted units, dinner and dancing. And that'll be on Saturday, October twenty-seventh. So please see our city website, our Military Support Committee website, or ask Councilmember Davies or myself about it. We'd be happy to get you information, get you connected with some tickets, and we are also looking for sponsors. And all the funds raised do go to directly support our adopted military units and their families. And then we had, we had the, oh, already, you already talked about OCBC. That was very interesting today. The Orange County Business Council's, it was, "How e-commerce is transforming the future of Orange County's retail sector, land use, workforce, and tax base." And it is all interconnected. And I will leave it at that. And now we will go to department reports. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, school started today. So our folks were out in force around the school zones, especially our motor officers. For the most part, parents did pretty well. I know it's an adjustment and I know it's hard to get your kids out early to drag them to school. So whatever you can do to parents, whatever you can do to get your kids out a few minutes early, slow down, be patient. Don't go, don't go around the stop buses. Our folks are out in force and they will enforce the laws, but we would rather not. Just patience for everybody is what I'd ask. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Dixon? Glad you're here. Director Roseberry?
Thank you. I just wanted to do a quick update on the noise study that we had conducted for the airplane overflights over in the, near Sea Point, I'm sorry, Seaview Park and over in Bear Brand. Those took place last Tuesday and Wednesday, the fifteenth and sixteenth. And right now, they told, they have told me that they've gotten some really good data and they're putting together a report for us now. And hopefully, we'll get that sometime next week.
Okay, thank you. And you reminded me of something I skipped on my notes and I'll just add that at the end of last month, Congressman Roebacher introduced a bill, HR sixty-five fifty-eight, the No Noise Act. So for our residents who are concerned about the jet noise, please be following that and let your friends and relatives in other areas of the country know about it so then they can contact their congressman as well. And that's HR sixty-five fifty-eight. Mr. Masbooti?
Councilmembers, two Saturdays ago, Alliance constructed the pedestrian bridge across the creek at, from Forbes to the Pussern Blue property. So the bridge is up, they're finalizing the wall and hopefully that will be ready when the park is completed on the Pussern Development property. Then the residents will be able to cross the creek and go on the trail to the new park there.
Thank you. City Clerk Gomez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a quick update. As you all know, we're preparing for an election on November sixth and the nomination period closed for the full-term seats. We have two offices up. And it closed August tenth, like I said. We have both incumbents that filed and qualified. Councilmember Minigar and our mayor, Elaine Genaway, both are the incumbents that will be on the ballot for the full-term election. We also had an extended period because our Councilmember Lindholm did not file. So we have three qualified candidates as of now. Sandy Rains, Bijan John Singh Daliwal, and Deborah Towns are the three qualified candidates for the short-term office. And I encourage anyone that wants to vote, that isn't registered yet, to vote by October twenty-second in order to get, be able to vote in this next election. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Giglio?
Thank you, Mayor. Our recreation brochure has been posted on the City of Laguna Niguel website and it has been delivered to all residences in Laguna Niguel and it's available in all city facilities. And our recreation registration office is open again and fully operational. So we can help out with any of your needs. Thank you.
And on Friday, I think it was the tenth, was the last concert of the series with The Answer. Thank you to your department, your team. Fantastic job. You made sure all of Laguna Niguel had fun this summer. So please give them our appreciation. Deputy City Manager Bell?
Just wanted to announce that the city has rolled out a new website. We soft-rolled it out on July second of this year and we're still working out some of the bugs. Most of them have been fixed at this point and we would like to invite the community to take a look at it. It is geared to be viewed on mobile devices. We received information that most of the people are actually accessing the website on their mobile device. And so it shows up, it looks a lot more modern and it has a lot of really good information. But most importantly, it has a feature called Notify Me where you can sign up in advance for the kinds of alerts that you're interested in receiving, whether it's when alley's recreation brochure is available or when there's a road closure or whatever it is that you're interested in, you can just click the box and sign up and get all of that information right to your email or text message, whichever you prefer.
Thank you. Okay, and again, welcome, Director Scott.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'm very excited to be here as your Public Works Director. It's my privilege to serve this outstanding community. I just want to extend a really big thank you to Engineering Services Manager, Ziad Masbooti. He's been a tremendous help in this transition. I really appreciate his efforts. And I've just had a warm welcome here at the city so far, so thank you very much.
Thank you. We're glad you're here. Okay, City Manager Ridge?
Just one quick item, Mayor. Hopefully, you've all noticed, we had the facade on the building painted. It has a fresh look now and hopefully, you notice the difference on it. That's it.
Looks very nice. Looks very nice. Okay, city council will now go back into closed session. This concludes our open session of the city council meeting.